Well, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
A nation.
A nation under God, in the spirit of liberty, justice, and all. Home in silence, please. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Griffin.
Present.
Mr. Haas.
Here.
Ms. Howe.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Ms. Radel.
Here.
Ms. Edman.
Here.
Mr. Schnee.
Present.
Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. Vog.
Here.
Mr. McGinley.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. We don't have any recognitions or ceremony or proclamations for this evening. Additions to or deletions from the voting session agenda.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, Mr. Griffin.
Could I add to the agenda a discussion about the district attorney's salary item?
I think that's better served than the work session. We could certainly add it there, though, Mr. Griffin.
Okay. I wanted to make a motion at the voting session, so I'll make my motion then when we get there.
You're making a motion where? Where do you intend to make?
We can't make a motion in the work session.
Work session, that's what I'm saying.
I'll make it in my voting session then.
So, repeat, what do you want to do?
I just want to have a discussion about the salaries for the district attorney's office and propose a motion to to correct that situation if we could.
Well, the discussion, I think, would be best served in the work session.
Okay. All right, we'll put it over there, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, very good.
I don't believe anything will be done prior to or any, so I don't think we're jeopardizing anything, Mr. Urban. Okay? We have a motion to adopt the voting session agenda.
Excuse me, Mr. McGinn.
Yes, go ahead.
Have we heard anything from the state on extending the face value of taxes?
I'm not aware of anything. I, you know, we discussed that, I think, once or twice already, Mr. Schnee, but I'm not aware of anything, Ms. Crokel or Mr. DeLuca.
I have not. I have not, and I am signed up for notifications, so I haven't.
Okay, Mr. Schnee, Ms. Crokel hasn't received anything, and she is signed up to get the notification. All right.
My question to the Office of Law, are they coming up with money for that extension? Or could we do that on our own tonight?
I don't believe they're, I didn't see that the state, you're talking about the state coming up with funds for that extension? I didn't see that. I didn't see that the state would be coming up with funds for that. At least not in what's on the Senate.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I know Mr. Vog brought that resolution to the table.
Yes, he did.
And he was told to hold off on that because of what was going on at the state level.
Right.
Evidently, they're not acting on it. If Mr. Vog wants to bring that resolution to the table tonight, I'll second that.
Well, we don't.
Extending it, just like we did last year for the 60 days, that worked very well for everybody.
We don't have the resolution in front of us because it wasn't on the agenda, and I didn't know there was any.
And I apologize for that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I understand. That's not a problem, but we have to get a resolution in front of us. I don't, Mr. Vog, do you have a resolution or?
Not yet. Let's do it for next meeting.
Okay. Did you hear that, Mrs. Schnee, next meeting?
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. We will have everything prepared then for next meeting, so that we have in front of us, so everybody can see the item that we're going to be voting on, okay? Do we have a motion to adopt the voting?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
On that item, Solicitor Crokel said that we couldn't bring that item to the table because the statute was expired and we have to wait for them to renew it. That's why we didn't act on Mr. Vog's motion.
Yeah, we will do that research and make sure everything, if there's something available, that's one thing. If there's still none available, make sure everybody understands why.
Okay, very good.
Provide that information, okay?
Thank you.
You'll probably get, I would hope, you'll get that prior to our next scheduled meeting, okay? I need a motion to adopt the voting session agenda.
So moved, Leon.
Okay, Ms. McDermott and Mr. Schnee, you're second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding requirement, majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Ms. Howe, do you make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second for Ms. Howe?
Second, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Moving down to the next motion, motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings. The dissent to the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Kendra.
Okay, Ms. Radel, do we have a second for Ms. Radel?
Second, Griffin.
Mr. Perry. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Now we're down to public comment on voting session agenda items. Members of the public who would like to speak in regards to items that are on our voting session agenda. It's now open for members of the public.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raabo speaking.
Go ahead, Ms. Raabo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On item number three, I have only one question with regards to the RACB grant. Where the 50% match is coming from, who's, you know, if they have the 50% match on hand, or will they have it on hand, and where will it come from? That's on number three. And on number four, the motion to approve resolution for the LURDA for Hazelton area. My only concern, Mr. Chairman, is twofold. One is the fact that there's going to be, as you and the council are aware, of the Hazelton Creek project, because that is going to be a massive development project regarding the south of 309, heading into Luzerne County. Also, on that same stretch of road, there's going to be this development. So my concern has always been, and I addressed this at the Hazel Township LURDA meeting, is the traffic that would be impacted. Coming in and out of Luzerne County, that would affect existing commerce, and also, you know, regular driver traffic coming in and out of the county during the summer months. I think that whether our, whether the county, Mr. O'Neil, or the manager, or works with Hazel Township and the city of Hazelton, with regards to how the traffic will be impacted to ensure that it won't affect existing commerce during the summer months, I think that needs to be taken into consideration. Also, with regards to the exemption, I mean, I think it could be a little better because I think that the developer can go down to the 50% match, or 50% LURDA instead of the 60, was it 65% LURDA? Because he does have a parent company that is very successful, that he could borrow funds from in order to get it down to 50%, that it won't impact the county and the other taxing bodies. So those are my concerns and questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Okay. Other members of the public, please. Other members of the public who would like to comment in regards to agenda items. I think everyone received an email. Excuse me?
Mr. Chairman. Hello?
Yes, who's that?
Mr. Mantle.
Go ahead.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead.
I don't know if it's on the agenda or not. The letter from Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority, is that on the voting agenda today?
It's not on the agenda, Mr. Mantle.
Okay, all right. I'll pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We received an email from Mr. Faust. Mr. Faust is a resident of Worksport Township, president of Northeast PA Building and Construction Trades Council. I'm emailing you today to remind council to have developers reach out and work with the Northeast PA Building Trades, ensure local labor is utilized during the construction phase of the projects when receiving any sort of tax forgiveness slash abatement. It is citizens of Luzerne County that burden the tax breaks you may offer and should have afforded opportunity to work on the projects that benefit those tax breaks slash incentives. I've had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Renoff from Blue Cup Ventures LLC today. We had a positive conversation. I shared my above thoughts with him on this LURDA. I believe if all work together, we can get as many Luzerne County construction workers as possible on the upcoming projects. Jeff and I agree to keep the communication lines open as he progresses with the construction phase of the anticipated projects. I appreciate your time tonight. Look forward to working together with all parties involved to build a better Northeast PA while utilizing our skilled labor force. Okay, that's the last public comment. We're now down to the motion regards to the minutes from the April 13 meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Kendra.
Ms. Radel, do we have a second for Ms. Radel?
Second, Leon.
Ms. McDermott? On the question? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition, any abstentions?
No.
Excuse me, opposition, Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Okay.
And no, Mr. Griffin.
And Mr. Griffin, thank you. Any abstentions? Old business?
Mr. McGinley, I have two items under old business. I believe I have two items anyway. Back in, back in March, we were notified, council was notified of a suicide at the prison. I was wondering if we could get an update on the coroner's report, as well as the the district attorney's report from the manager on that, regarding that matter?
We certainly can ask for that, and I'll ask them to provide that information where they can. Second item, Mr. Griffin?
The only, the only other thing I have on the second item is I noticed that the RFP for the codification has not been done yet.
Well, the RFP, just for an update for you, Mr. Griffin, and everyone else. The RFP has been reviewed, updated, it's been forwarded, and shortly you should see the RFP advertised.
Yeah, we just want to, Mark McCowsky and I are both eyeing it together just to make sure that all the information is accurate, which I hope to do with Attorney McCowsky on Thursday.
Is our clerk involved in that, Remil?
Absolutely.
Yes, we have it going to her. We have it going to the clerk.
Absolutely, she's involved.
Which is, which is why we're checking to make sure, because there are certain notifications embedded in the RFP, so we're going to both eyeball it to make sure everything goes to Sharon.
Excellent, very good. Thank you so much for the update. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay. All right, let's go to the agenda items, please. First item is the motion to adopt a resolution adopting the 2021 Lackawanna-Luzerne Counties Comprehensive Plan. And you will notice.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair. Oops, I'm sorry.
Just one second, and then I'll certainly entertain your motion. As you've noticed below there, there are several pieces of information that have been provided in your agenda tonight, and things that we've talked about over the past several meetings. Okay, Mr. Haas, you want to make that motion?
Make the motion to approve the losing Lackawanna Regional Counties Comprehensive Plan 2021 as outlined in item 1D in the agenda.
Okay, that includes all the edits that have been submitted and incorporated into the plan, am I correct, Mr. Haas?
The final draft, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Second, Schnee.
Second for Ms. Haas, Mr. Haas?
Second, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee. On the question?
Mr. McGinley, just real quick, if I could get clarification from Mr. Jones. I have no problem with the comprehensive plan. I just have a question, maybe you can answer, as to why we're, I think this is the first year that we're doing a co-county sponsor of the comprehensive plan, if I'm not mistaken. We usually did that on our own, as an individual county. Is there a reason why we joined with Lackawanna County on this comprehensive plan?
Mr. Jones, would you answer that question, please?
Hi, Councilmember Griffith.
Hi.
Hi. Actually, ten years ago, in 2011, the two counties undertook a bi-county comprehensive plan at that time as well, and that's the current plan that we have serving us at this very moment. The idea, I think, was that upon the staff leadership at the time, they thought, let's think of ourselves as a region. The region has purchasing power, you know, Lackawanna and Luzerne Counties work together on joint efforts. We have the airport, we have the baseball and hockey stadiums because we pool our resources and work together as a region, and I think that's been the theme for the last 20 years in working on these plans.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones. I appreciate clarity.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I just had a comment, Mr. McGinley.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, I mean, I understand about Luzerne and Lackawanna County trying to work together, although in the past, Lackawanna County has not always been a good neighbor to Luzerne County, especially baseball. That's a very sore spot, Mr. Jones, with us. I was reading the plan over, I mean, quite honestly, in my own opinion, it's, I know that a lot of work has gone, has been done to develop the plan, but I think a lot of it is just a lot of words and a lot of fluff, unfortunately. I won't be supporting the plan tonight if it's enjoined with Lackawanna County.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Edman? Ms. Edman? Ms. Edman? Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Edman?
She's having issues with her microphone. I'm working with her right now.
You can just give a thumbs up, Sheila. Pretty good. Thumbs up for yes, thumbs down for no.
I remember somebody did that on the Senate floor not too long ago, right?
Yeah, the Roman Senate.
Jared, any luck, or are we stymied? Jared?
Still working on it.
Okay, continue, Ms. Lawrence.
The only two left is Ms. Edman and yourself.
I vote yes.
Then we're waiting for Ms. Edman.
Well, uh, Mr. DeLuca or Ms. Crokel, can we come back to finish that vote, or should, do we have to wait?
She's coming on now?
Well, Jared is working with her. She's having issues with her microphone.
I mean, if council has no objection to that, I don't know that we have any procedure for that.
I think she texts someone her vote.
Excuse me?
Can she text someone her vote?
Oh, yeah, is that permissible? That's.
I would rather her actually either speak it or.
Yeah, okay, so we want.
Yeah, I mean, even, I like Mr. Haas' idea of the thumbs up, but apparently that's not.
Can she raise her hand? Is that possible?
Could we see her? I don't, I don't know if I see her even on here now.
Uh, let me see.
I believe she has to be present. The vote has to take place. I don't think we can come back for the vote.
Okay, so.
Can we? I mean, we can't, you know, just stop the vote and come back.
Well, the vote is strongly in favor of supporting the plan, so.
I don't think that it will make a difference if she misses this vote. I would call the result and move on.
Okay, let's do that. Ms. Lawrence, what's the result, please?
It is nine to one, nine yes, one no.
Okay, one. Microphone issues, okay. Back to the agenda. Number two, motion to approve the resolution approving the settlement pending litigation in the matter of Leonard D. O'Malecki versus Luzerne County. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion in this regard?
So moved.
Who, Mr. Perry?
Yep.
Do we have a second for Mr. Perry?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radel? On the question?
On the question, Mr. McGinn?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I have some concerns with this whole issue with this Mr. O'Malecki. I don't believe, I know at the last work session that we discussed this matter, we asked for some documentation on some things that we haven't received as of yet. I don't know if there was any policy or procedure by the past commissioners that was resolved that said that there was a matter to pay this settlement fee of severance pay of $3,000. I certainly don't know if he has any documentation to provide to us or to the Office of Law regarding his matter on the lawsuit that shows that he had any time coming, vacation time, sick time, or annual leave. We didn't see any of that documentation, that he's even entitled to any kind of settlement whatsoever. His matter was before the court, his attorney passed away. He was notified by the law firm that his attorney passed away. He waited several years, not months, years, before he got another attorney to pursue the matter, I believe. And now we're stuck with a, let's just give the guy $5,000 and move on. I don't think that's financially prudent for this council to do that. I think that we need to get more documentation to provide to council that he's actually even entitled to this. The man worked for the county for eight and a half, eight years and six months or so, according to the retirement decision. He's going to be getting his retirement, I believe, next year, according to the retirement coordinator. I just don't believe that, and I certainly understand that if we litigate this, we may go past the $5,000. I get it. I just think that the dangerous precedent that we're setting here by approving a lawsuit that is of this age, and with this flimsy of material to counsel to verify that he's even entitled to it, I don't think is appropriate. I would, I would like to make a motion to table this until we either get more documentation or we take it off the table, but I'm making a motion to table this.
Second, Schnee.
Okay, that was, Mr. Griffin made the motion. Mr. Schnee, you made the second to that motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay. No discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes. Table.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Edman, is she still having issues? Is she on?
I don't see her. Go ahead.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No. Motion to table passes. Moving on, number three. Motion to approve a resolution authorizing Luzerne County to apply for redevelopment assistance capital program grant on behalf of Embark Behavioral Health/Change Academy Lake of Ozarks Programs, KALO. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Leon.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second for Ms. McDermott?
Second, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee. On the question? I think Mr. Yanusi is with us. I saw his icon earlier. Mr. Yanusi, I think there was a question about the matching grant.
Yes, so, Mr. McGinley, could you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, yes, I'm on the phone, and I'm also here with Helene Creasy, the director of Embark KALO Change Academy Lake of the Ozarks, and she'll answer that question.
Yes, there is a private match to match the request for the grant.
Okay, so private funding?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Sure. Mr. Haas, go ahead.
Not necessarily a question, a comment. It's certainly appropriate use for the RCAP money. But, you know, we've got an awful lot of blighted properties here in Luzerne County, and we're told time and time again that these RCAP funds aren't eligible to apply for, you know, entities that want to rehab other blighted properties. I would just like to see more of an endeavor to really work alongside municipalities, use these RCAP funds. They're certainly available, and they're sitting on the shelf. So again, just a comment.
Very good. No problem. Roll call, please.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Edman? Still having trouble?
Yeah, I don't see your icon at all right now.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you. Moving down to number four, motion to approve a resolution providing tax exemption for new construction in deteriorated areas under the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act. This would be for the Blue Cup Ventures LLC. Do we have a motion?
Present it, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry? On the question?
On the question, Mr. McGinley?
Go ahead.
Last, at our last council meeting, we voted seven to four to not eliminate the penalty, or reduce the penalty, I should say, from 10% to 1%. It was a seven to four vote. I hope that the folks who voted against providing taxpayers relief this year do the same on this motion as well. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Anyone else, please?
My question, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Haas.
Hello?
I think that's Sheila coming back. Thank you, Ms. Edman. I know you've had some issues. Mr. Haas is making a comment, please. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, sir. So, you know, to apply for the SLURDA, what we see here with these kind of abatement programs, I really, really don't support them because I don't trust them. And again, the average person in Luzerne County is always asking, where's my tax abatement? I think Mr. Griffin brought a very good point there. When we look at some, quite a few of these properties, when the, when the period of exemption expires, we always see that there's, the entity turns around and then appeals the taxes on, for the new assessment of the property. So my question is, what guarantees do we have that as the SLURDA goes into effect, that the property is divested and it's sold to some other new corporation or occupier, whoever that is? What guarantees do we have that they're going to adhere to the assessed value and not do a runaround and then suck the taxpayers for, you know, again, basically giving up less taxes in exchange for a nice, healthy abatement program?
I don't know.
So I don't know if the developer's online, if he can.
He is. Randolph is with us.
Randolph, you want to address that?
Yes, I can. First of all, thank you for considering the request. The tax abatement is subject to the approval
Yes, I can. Uh, well, first of all, thank you for considering, um, our request. Uh, the tax abatement is subject to the approval of the tax assessor. And it's a, it's a 10-year tax abatement, and, uh, I think the one thing that, uh...
Mr. Randolph, there's a lot of static or something, I don't know. Just get a little louder or, or, I appreciate it. That's, the static is gone, so go ahead.
Um, well, first of all, thank you very much for considering our request for tax abatement. Tax abatements are, are by the tax assessor, so any appeal would have to be approved by tax assessor. It'd be, we would be, uh, we or any successful, it would have to, uh, be approved for future abatement by the tax assessor. I guess the, the other issue that's worth mentioning is that, um, with the improvement, the building improvement, this, this assess, this basically reduced assessment is only for the building. Uh, if a building goes on to the property, the land value goes up immediately after that new assessment comes in. So right now, the assessed value of that property for all 388 acres is about $15,000. It's, it's, it's inconsequential, but it will step up significantly, um, without an abatement after the building goes in. So I, and, and by the way, I don't like doing this. I think that, um, these assessments, these assessments, um, you know, unfortunately, it's, it needs to be done to be competitive with other parts of the state. Um, and I, we've asked for 65%, I think. Most of the other developers are asking for 100%. I think that's unconscionable, really. And, uh, call me stupid for not asking for 100%, but I just don't think that's right.
Thank you. Other questions?
Oh, just to follow, Mr. Chair, I, I didn't quite understand. Um, I, I think it might have cut out of a little bit what you said there, Mr. Randolph. So you're saying it's the, so when, whoever purchases the, the developments, the, the improvements, then it's up to them to, to appeal. Did I hear you correctly? It's up to the county to approve any appeal. The, the county tax assessor has to approve any, any appeal. Correct, yeah, absolutely. I understand that part of the process, but ju- just the fact that, you know, a new occupier would even, it, it just seems disingenuous to me, and we've seen this many times in the past where the, the, the agreed upon assessed value 10 years prior for, and, and like you said, many times 100% abatement. All right, yes, we're going to pay the full, the full tax in 10 years. Well, it comes time to pay the taxes and then they appeal it and it looks like it's significantly less than what the original estimation is for. You know, and that's what we keep on getting burned on these things. And I just want to know how, if, if you could give us any guarantees about something like that, since we're offering a 65% abatement, what guarantees do we have for our goodwill? I, I think my guarantee is that we're going to abide by the ruling of the tax assessor. So the, you know, the values are determined by fair market value, which is either of the replacement value or the discounted cash flow. So, uh, there's really no, you know, there's, it's, it's up to the county and the tax assessor to grant an appeal, and people can ask for them. But it really is, it's out of the owner's hands to do that, and, uh, you know, so really, is it, it's in your hands to decide whether that's a prudent thing to do.
Okay. Anyone else?
It's a good question, though, and it's, it's, it, it's too often done, uh, as a manipulation and a threat to leave. It's, it's, I totally agree with you. It's, it's just, it's not, it's not good for the county, it's not good for the job market. It's, it's not the right way to do things. Right, and so, I mean, you as the developer, you, you know, you, I, I, I totally understand. We've been through this a million times, you know, through different companies and firms, and it, it, it's kind of out of your hands, and I, I, I know it's kind of a, a very difficult even question to even ask you because you're not necessarily in a position to offer that because you just want to sell the property. And that's, that's why you're asking for it in the first place. I, I get that, but... We want to, we want to attract a good tenant to the property, and so the tenants will look at, and, and the, um, the tenants will look at other parts of the state and see what the values are there. So that's, that's really the, the issue is that, you know, you all in Northeast, they have to be competitive with, uh, other parts of the state, unfortunately.
That's part of the, us to some point.
We, we hear the same argument all the time, and, and my argument is if, 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 if everybody just played by the same rules and didn't offer any abatements, then we'd still be all at the same place and we'd benefit the taxpayers because we know, um, brick and mortar, that's how we fund our government. And, um, again, it's, it's, it's free development. We understand how the process works. It's to ignite development here in, in these areas in a brown field, so I appreciate that. But, um, you know, this, this location, we've had this debate with other developers before. A gentleman said, oh, yeah, well, you got to be competitive with, uh, people out in Columbus, Ohio, and down the 81 corridor. And the, the, the wonderful thing here about Luzern County is that we're only two miles from, uh, two miles, two miles from, uh, New York, from Hazelton, we're about an hour and, and 45 to Philadelphia, so it's, it's a very wonderful place to do business. And I think that itself is a, is a very good selling point. It is. Unfortunately, corporations and I, you know, I can speak from, this is my deepest experience, is that they'll look to see where they can, if, if another area is two bucks less a square foot on a million square foot building that's 2 million a year, it makes a decid, it makes a difference. And I wish it didn't, um, but it does.
Okay.
But good questions, I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I, the same ones every time, Mr. Randolph, and it's the first time we meet, but same ones every time. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, yes.
McGinn. Uh, Mr. Sedman and Ms. McDermott, go ahead, Mr. Schnee.
Hi, Ms. McDermott could go first.
Okay, Ms. McDermott, you have the floor.
Uh, Mr. Randolph, just in the last meeting, you had mentioned, right now, the, the land is assessed at 840,000. And one year after occupancy, it's going to be 40 million, uh, right with the buildings. The land will be assessed at 40 million. So that's what we're going to be getting taxes on one year after occupancy.
That's, that's with the full buildout of all the buildings. So that's, that's assuming that all the buildings are built out.
So that's...
Which we hope, which we hope to do, but that's, that's sort of...
A considerable amount of tax dollars over the 840,000.
Correct.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Schnee?
Yes, I, I just liked, uh, what I stated last meeting. Uh, myself and Mr. Perry, living down in the southern end here, are very familiar where, uh, Mr. Randolph wants to put his development. Uh, again, that's mine, mine land that's scarred for years, and if Mr. Randolph doesn't address that, there'll be nothing ever built there. Mr. Randolph's taken a big chance there, and again, I thank him for, uh, doing what he's doing, uh, trying to bring jobs there and bring a good tenant that, uh, we could rely on for years and for the hardworking people of Luzern County. I thank you, Mr. Randolph. Uh, it's a big venture for you there.
Well, it's an honor, it's an honor to work with you all. I, I, every day, I just, I work with somebody different from your county and your area, and it's, it's a pleasure. It's a pleasure, and a bunch of your old students, Mr. Perry.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Jared, is she, is she back on, or I thought I heard her.
Having issues with unmuting her phone now, so one second, calling her back.
Go ahead, continue, and then we'll come back.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Uh, normally I wouldn't support it, but this time, yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Hello.
Ms. Howe?
Hello.
Yes.
Is that Ms. Sedman? Ms. Sedman?
Yes, I'm here, but I'm having all sorts of problems. I, I mean, I'm hearing...
We can hear loud and clear now, and we're putting on the...
Yeah, I'm on the phone, but my computer just went down, so. Jared, I'll call you during breaks.
Okay, we're voting on the Blue Cup Ventures LLC tax, uh, abatement. So, uh, you in the roll call, what's your vote on that particular item, please?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, it's Sheila.
Yes.
On the vote you couldn't hear me for, that was a yes.
Okay, we'll note that. Number five, motion to approve a resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzern County and Luzern County Domestic Relations for the premises located 113 West North Street, Wilkes-Barre, PA 18711. Do we have a motion?
Presented, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radell, on the question? On the question, anyone, council? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you. Moving down to number six, motion to approve the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a contract with Thomas Reuters for the Westlaw Legal Research Sophomore. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Sheila.
Ms. Sedman, do we have a second, second for Ms. Sedman?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, on the question? Any member of council on the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you. And moving down to number seven, motion to adopt the resolution to abate the delinquent Luzern County taxes for the property located at 1206-1208 South Prospects Street in the city of Nanticoke, and the pin number is there. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Sheila.
Ms. Sedman, do we have a second for Ms. Sedman?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott? On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you. We're now at public comment on, uh, non-agenda items. Members of the public who would address council this time.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raabo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raabo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, with regards to these, uh, development issues, I'd echo with what Mr. Griffith and Mr. Haas had says about, had said about the tax abatements and, uh, for developers, uh, I think there needs to be something by the state that needs to ensure that, um, the taxing bodies, uh, you know, are basically get an assurance that, uh, the developer won't, uh, hit the, you know, um, you know, hit the road once they get their, uh, once they, once they flip the property and the, the abatement, uh, then turns over to someone else and there's no control over uh, what the proper, what, what ends up happening with the property or if, if the new owner sits on it. As you know, uh, when, uh, the first time, uh, the council, uh, looked at developments, uh, especially one that comes to mind with the Earth Conservancy in Trammell Pro, when they, uh, asked for the KOZ extension and then left, and then, uh, they flipped it three weeks later for a $7 million tax-free prof, profit. So I hope those, uh, days are over, um, and, uh, I, I, like all of you, uh, look forward to economic development in all ass, all parts of the county. But, Mr. Chairman and members of council and county manager, I hope that you all remember that economic development does not happen without quality of life. Because without quality of life, economic development does not happen. They go hand in hand, just so you, you, you're aware, and I'm sure you are aware. Um, with regards to the work session, I would like to make council aware, and I'd like to ask, uh, why the Hazelton Land Bank is on the agenda considering there's no members of the board of the Hazelton City Land Bank, nor is there any funding for it that I'm aware of, or even Hazelton City Council was made aware of, because they asked for a financial, uh, plan for how they're going to purchase the property. So, um, if you recall back in 2015, when Northeast Regional Land Bank made their presentation, they submitted a full packet to the council with respect to their, uh, board members, the bylaws, uh, the ordinance that was passed. I think all that, uh, documentation was submitted, Mr. Chairman, to the council at that time. Where's the information, uh, for the Hazelton City, uh, Land Bank? Uh, that's what I'd like to know, and I think you, you, as members of council, should ask, uh, whoever's making the presentation, uh, that question. So I hope that, uh, comes through as well as, uh, with the Broad Street Exchange Building, um, how long is the lease extension for? That's all I had, I had, Mr. Chairman, as far as the lease extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Mr. Manza?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on that, uh, the gentleman that wants a 65% abatement or taxes. I don't know. It wasn't county council, it was, it was, um, commissioners at the time, but everybody remembers Everhart Faber, Certain Eads, and Foster Wheeler, and I know everybody does remember it. Because there were big concerns that stuck, stuck around the area for 10 years. Each company was only there for 10 years. After they got done with the tax abatement, they bailed out of, bailed out of Luzern County. And the, the people don't remember these things, just like they don't remember the flood, and they don't remember the rain tax. You know, it, it, it just, things that they should remember are the things that hurt Luzern County, not help Luzern County. And, and, and what I mentioned before was, is the county going to be in partners with Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority? And I'd like to have that question answered by anybody. And I'll sit back and listen. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? We did receive one email from, um, Laura Panero, and, uh, this was received on Monday of this week regarding civil slash criminal asset forfeiture, forfeiture. Money and assets seized can be allocated to various nonprofits, agencies within the county and ruse place to be distributed to those in the county who need it most. Between various grants available and seized assets, there is enough funding to assist the county's vulnerable citizen. The seized assets are used to fund future drug rates. The money can be divided between nonprofits and law enforcement if necessary. Using this money in combination with grant funding would help alleviate excess taxes. And like I said, that's Laura Panero submitted that. Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved, Perry.
Mr. Perry, do we have a second?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any extensions? None heard, motion? Any in opposition, any extensions, none heard, motion carries. We will take a break until 7:05 and then we'll begin with our work session. At 7:05, please. Thank you.
I gone. Tim, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
All right, coming through loud and clear now. 7:05, we're going to go to the work session.
Okay, let me just get myself organized here.
Okay.
Okay, there we go. And I already hung up, Sheila, just because I didn't want to go.
Okay, thank you, Jared. We'll have, I'll have to figure out my computer later, I guess. I don't know. I'm going to, 7:05? 7:05.
That's correct. So you got a couple of minutes there. Thanks, Jared.
Not a problem.
Tim?
Yes, Ms. Saban.
Tim, what, what was the vote on the LERT?
Unanimous.
Oh, okay, great.
Yep.
You're on mute, Mr. McGinley. You're on mute. You're still on mute. You're still muted. Maybe you want to try star six?
Tim, is it not letting you click the unmute button in the top? I know I can't hear you. You can call me real quick if you need to.
Sheila, you should be an expert in that, right?
Let me tell you, you know what happened in Jewish, you say you should never give a kinehara, meaning you should never say something good because it's bound to go wrong. So I got up tonight and I said my computer and camera and sound are working great. And there it went.
I got it.
You should never do that.
Okay, Jared, help me out. I appreciate his help. We're going to be, call a meeting in order. We've already done the pledge and the moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffiths?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Houck?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Radell?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present. Thank you. Auditions and deletions, just so, number three has been deleted. It's not required that we do anything this time regarding that contract, so we will delete that at this point in time. Anyone else, additions or deletions?
Mr. McGinley?
Go ahead.
Could I, could I please add on to the agenda, the discussion about the district attorney salary?
Yep, we'll put that on 13, be number 13, but we lost number three, okay?
Yep, and I, I have one other thing I just wanted to, it's probably not a lengthy item, but I just wanted to make a comment about the ACE Commission or the ACE Code, the Accountability Code. And I know we're going to have a code review committee meeting next week, but I just wanted to make a brief statement on that. Nothing lengthy.
Well, at the end of our agenda.
Okay, that's fine.
You can have a statement in regards to ACE or whatever, you know, discussion when you want.
That's fine. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We added the DA's salary adjustments, okay?
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, Sheila.
Ms. Saban, do we have a second for Ms. Saban?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any extensions none heard? Moving down to number one, Mr. Swets?
Yes, Mr. McGinley. For budget reports. You have the budget reports in front of you. The, the biggest item in the budget reports of relevance is, I think as everyone's well aware, the first quarter report will be coming out shortly. It's actually at the next meeting. This is to March, but you'll get a more updated March with PowerPoints and more detail and high level and a little bit more drilled down next meeting. But one thing I did want to mention is the real estate tax line because I think everyone realizes that, yes, as I've stated before, you know, we are not out of the pandemic yet, but our bills did not go out until the second week of February instead of the first week. We also had more of a mail issue early in the year, I think, as everyone was aware of. And still at the end of March, whether it be from stimulus money or other grants that were out there, we have budget amendments tonight. We've had, have more during the year. 20% of real estate taxes were paid. So with everything going on, that was a very solid number, really just six weeks into the period. So I just wanted to make counsel aware that. One other thing, last meeting, Ms. Houck mentioned, and I'm sure other people noticed, but Ms. Houck brought our attention about the AP report. So we really scrutinized AP. Obviously, the bills come down as they come down. We needed a priority to make sure that as the, you know, the early bills are paid first, you know, kind of, not just first in, first out, but if I got something today that's due tomorrow, it doesn't matter that I just got it today, it's got to be paid. So we really made a concerted effort to get those bills out before the meeting and get everything cleaned up on the accounts payable side. The bank accounts are the bank accounts and we have some amendments tonight. I'm sure we'll have more amendments as the year goes on, but that's really all I have. but that's really all I have for the, for the report. Uh, the, the council did get the, uh, audit, the audit, uh, Mr. Hartzell from sent the report out today. So that update was also given. So I think everything from the finance side, everyone is aware where we're at at this point, uh, but I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Swets.
Well, I have a comment. It's Linda.
Go ahead.
Mr. Swets, I really appreciate the cleaning up of the AP because, um, it looks to me like we only have two outstanding vendors. And, um, I think this is the first time I've ever seen anything, um, like that. And so, um, I think it's great because so many of those vendors are local businesses and, um, you know, they've all suffered with the pandemic. And I think that it, it just sends a great message to our local businesses that the county is being a responsible customer. So thank you for that.
Very good. Nice comment. Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. McGinley?
Go ahead, please.
I have, I have a couple of, a couple of questions on the, on the budget. If Mr. Swets would indulge me on, uh, and I, I wrote the page numbers down on our agenda for, and these are the pages that are on the, uh, it's called the agenda page, not the, uh, the PDF page at the top of your, uh, screen. So my first question is in division thirteen on page three, Mr. Swets. Uh, I see it's a, it's a minuscule amount, but it says room and board for fifty dollars for the courts. Could you kind of give me an idea what that is, just real quick? It's on page three of the agenda.
Yeah, I, I see it there, Mr. Griffith. I'd actually probably have to pull up New World because as you said, it's a pretty, pretty small. I do not know off the top of my head.
Okay, well, I'll take, I'll take a look at New World. I thought maybe you might have had it quick. Uh, and go down to, now, if you go to page four.
One second, just so that.
Okay.
Just clarify this, but then certainly you have the floor.
Sure.
Mr. Swets, if you look at that, would you please send that out to everybody so that we have that answer for Mr. Griffith and whoever? Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Yeah, so anything I, anything I have, I'll answer to the whole, you know, Mr. Griffith and everyone tonight. Anything I don't have, I'll email to everyone.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay.
Mr. Griffith, you got the floor. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McGinley. Uh, page four, uh, real estate prior year. There's a million five nineteen in there. Uh, is that something that, uh, is that, is that normal for us to get that kind of revenue at this time of the year? Is that, uh, how did that get to be such a large number?
Yeah, so it is normal. So basically what happens is, you know, as I said, the bills go out in February. Uh, as things go to through northeast revenue, that's on a different line, as you're aware, the prior year taxes. But there are times where we'll get something in, in the early part of the year, in January and February, that are still related to the prior year. Uh, usually that'll be anywhere from one point one to one point four million related to the prior year. Uh, and it actually gets booked as an odd entry, but it is a large number. But yes, that's, that is actually relatively, uh, pretty close to normal for this time of year. There'll be nothing the rest of the year. It's really before the bills go out, anything related to the, to the prior year.
So is that a number that we should be budgeting when we're working on a budget? Because we didn't budget any money for there.
We, we could possibly break it out of the, of the current real estate. As I talked before, uh, you know, it, it sounds nice and I don't mind doing it, but just like when we talked about trying to break out, you know, the percentage penalty, we just basically use a, and we understand that people are paying in, you know, discount, a face and penalty, but we just budget at face and say this is a percentage of face. Uh, we can certainly look at what was been in there the last few years and move that out of the top line, uh, and say, okay, this is the percentage that should be in real estate. This is a percentage that should be in the prior year real estate. Uh, so everyone could see, you know, it's budgeted that way. And yes, it is close to the budget and what is actually in prior years. We could do that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm just thinking because we really don't have an idea other than this number that appears on our sheet now that, uh, what budget, what money was collected for prior year taxes for people who have not paid their taxes until January of the following year. So, so I, I just wanted to know if that's something when we budget, we should put that in there, just, just for clarity. Um, and, and the other.
I think we could.
Okay. The other question that I have, and, uh, department, I, I talked to, uh, Leanne McDermott, Ms. McDermott about this registration fee, and I spoke to Sean Shimani about this registration fee that the county tax claim office is charging for a deposit to enter the sale. Mr. Shimani says that that money comes to the county. It does not go to elite revenue. Could you tell me what line item that that money is accounted in, that one hundred dollar deposit?
The registration fee, this is a, I, I knew we had a registration fee. I thought it was in elite. So I'd actually have to do research to find out where it is, uh, because I honestly thought it went to elite. But if it goes to us, I'll track it down and let all council know.
Yeah, he, he told, I spoke to, uh, Mr. Shimani yesterday, and he said that hundred dollars is not money that they collect and keep. That's money they collect and they give to the county. It was something that was done with the sheriff's office, I guess, in years past where they charged a hundred dollars. It's a non-refundable deposit. And I said, well, I need to find out where that money's being accounted for and how much we're getting from those sales of that hundred dollar deposit. So if you could do some research on that, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, I could coordinate with, uh, Mr. Shimani in that office as well as our sheriff's office. And, and again, tell all of council what line it's in and, and what we've gotten in prior years, just to give you an idea.
Okay, that'd be great. Um, and I have a couple more items here. Uh, page ten, division fifty, uh, road and bridge, other state grant. We got, uh, eleven, eleven thousand dollars. Is that, uh, do you know where that grant come, what other state, what other grant states that is? Or do, should I look in New World, do you think?
No, I would, I would, I would look in, I, and again, I could, not that I mind you looking, and I know all of council has access, but I would look or I'd have to talk to Mr. O'Neil.
Okay.
I do not know off the top of my head.
Okay. And then in, in expenses, one of the things that stood out for me is, I'm looking at unemployment compensation on page fourteen for specifically county council, but it goes across all departments and divisions. But unemployment's at sixty-six percent, and that's a pretty standard number throughout all the departments and divisions. And I'm wondering if it's sixty-six percent and we're only at the end of March, well, how are we going to make our unemployment? Is there, is there a reason why either we didn't budget enough or that the number's higher than we anticipated?
Yeah, so it's the way the number comes in. So it is, it is probably going to be a little bit higher, and we may need to do a transfer. But what happens is on the first, uh, I think it's eleven thousand. I have to actually look up the exact amount, but it's on the first, so much of each employee. So after they hit that amount, they don't get it for the rest of the year. I think the rate might have went up slightly, but we're not going to be at, you know, a hundred and fifty percent or anything like that. Uh, I do get your point that we, but normally we would be higher earlier in the year. Uh, but I, I could dig in some to make sure that we're going to have enough. But I get it. It's at sixty-six percent in a quarter. We're not going to be at, you know, two hundred percent at the end of the year.
Okay, so we, it, it's not that we, did we not know the correct number when we budgeted? Is that a problem? Or is, did we budget the wrong amount? Or why is that? Shouldn't it be, should it not really be twenty percent or twenty-five percent?
Oh, we, no, we actually get the numbers, you know, through our stuff in C cap, we get the numbers. There's times again that during the budget, we'll get them after the actual budget, either after the budget's passed, or any adjustments we can make, we make during the budget process. But there are times you get things either after or, you know, after the time and we can't make a change. But again, we'll look at it. It's not going to be two hundred percent, and I understand the question. So I'll come back to all of council with where we're going to end and what the percentage should be.
Okay. And then if I could move down to, uh, I think it's probably page, uh, looks like page probably eighteen, I think of our, our report, uh, the district attorney's office, we have a machinery and equipment, uh, expenditure of thirty-two thousand, four hundred dollars, and it's a hundred percent at the end of the line item. And I looked in New World and it said it's for lease payments. Are those four lease payments paid yearly in, uh, in the first part of the year? Or because it, uh, that's, that's, I mean, they're basically thirty-two thousand dollars in lease payments. So.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that is the vehicle that you questioned last year. I believe the district attorney leases that vehicle, uh, and did, and did not buy that vehicle outright. The one that was bought at the end of nineteen or?
Yeah, well, there's, there's actually.
It's actually leased, not bought, the one that was questioned.
There's actually four leases there. That's, there's a, there's a A, B, C, and D in New World, and they're showing those lease payments of like seven, seventy-five hundred dollars each. So I'm guessing, I'm guessing that that's probably an annual, uh, lease payment. And if you break that down, we're paying about seven hundred and sixteen dollars a month for a lease on a vehicle. That's pretty expensive lease.
I think it's more than one vehicle, but yes, the district attorney's office does lease vehicles. I know the county, uh, you know, mostly buys vehicles, but the district attorney's office had in the past leased vehicles. But again, not just for you, for all of council, I could dig in and say how many vehicles it is and what, you know, what the amount is. And, you know, is that the amount for two vehicles? Is that the amount for four vehicles? I could certainly get that.
Yeah, because I, I, like I said, I did look at New World and looked at the documentation as to why the thirty-two thousand was spent, and it is a lease payment, and it was paid for, uh, Fulton Bank for four particular individual leases. But my, my big concern is if we're leasing vehicles and we're leasing them at seven hundred and sixteen dollars a month, we must be leasing Mercedes-Benzes or something, because there's no way you can lease a seven hundred and sixteen thousand, sixteen dollar vehicle. I mean, I, Ford explorers, expeditions don't go for that much money in a lease. So if you check on that, I'd appreciate that as well. I know we did talk about them buying vehicles, but if we're leasing them and we're, we're paying that kind of money, we're probably better off to buy them outright. Uh, the, I think that's, let me just look and see if there's any, most of the other stuff is pretty small. I could probably shoot them to you in an email and save a whole bunch of stuff. So I, I think those were probably the highlights. Uh, you know, the courts have, oh, the, the courts one I have here on, I don't know what page that's on, but it's an expense for machinery and equipment. And out of that line item in New World, they're, they're painting Judge Gartley's office from machinery and equipment line item. And it's considerably less than five thousand dollars. So I'm kind of concerned about why these departments are taking money from machinery and equipment to, to paint the office where that could come out of some other line item, I think. I think that would be more appropriate to take from someplace else, don't you believe?
Yeah, and we'll, and we'll talk to, uh, Mr. Heimars, and as I said, we'll go through stuff as we get ready for the first quarter report. Uh, if we find anything, and we'll obviously look at this that needs to be moved, uh, we can, you know, obviously make the entry to move it to a more appropriate line. You know, for something like that, you would think if there's not an office supplies, if there's a material supply, something like that nature, or either, even maybe if it's a third party that's doing it in another contractual line would be, uh, more appropriate than the line that was used that you mentioned.
Yeah, he's, he's using another, an outside contractor to do it, there's no question. And you know what I'll do, uh, Mr. Swets, is I'll drop these in an email for you just to refresh your memory, just to make sure that you don't miss, miss something that I might have jotted down. So if, if that'll be helpful for you, I'll send that along.
Oh, that's fine. And then I will respond not to you, but I'll have counsel. I'll, you know, obviously put you on there and I'll put county council on, uh, courtesy and answer all the questions. Not a problem.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving down to number two, discussion regarding resolution, authorizing county manager to execute a contract with Penn Ave Realty for the Penn Place Employee Parking. And I think Mr. O'Neil is going to speak to this. Mr. O'Neil? Mr. O'Neil, you're muted.
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Good evening, members of council. Um, I wasn't really prepared to address this particular item. Um, I think this is being handled by the purchasing department, but I do, I do know that this is for the parking spaces we currently lease in the Genetti parking lot, catty corner to our Penn Place building. It's basically a renewal of the existing lease that we were in, uh, last year. It's for the twenty-twenty-one year calendar year.
And is the rates the same as last year's rates?
The rate, I believe, is the same, yes. That was, uh, I, I believe that was an agreement that we had. It was, it was, um, from, from the original lease, uh, was extended to us for twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
It was just under thirty dollars per space, uh, per month.
Okay. Questions?
Just as an added note, we've also been given, uh, more spaces that are closer to the building than we originally, uh, had in last year's lease. Uh, Mr. Genetti, um, was able to free up spots, uh, near the corner there, um, where originally we were in a lot further south on Pennsylvania Ave. So, uh, it's more of a convenience for our employees.
Okay. I thought someone else was trying to speak there, too.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. O'Neil, is that, is the, a contract price, if you could answer, I don't know if you, you have this information off the, off the top of your head. Is that, this, uh, rental higher or the same as it was last time? I know we had some questions about this during budget time about parking fees. So could you address whether that's an increase or not?
Well, th- this, this price is the same as we were paying in twenty-twenty. Uh, it is a decrease from the previous year when we were with another less, lesser.
Right.
It is about ten, if I'm, if I'm, uh, don't quote me, but I believe it's about ten dollars per month per space less, uh, when we transitioned over to the Genetti parking lot in twenty-twenty.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Like I said, number three is off the agenda for this evening. Moving down to number four, discussion regarding resolution, authorizing county manager to execute a lease addendum between Luzerne County and Luzerne County Community College for premises currently leased in the Broad Street Exchange, Business Exchange Building. Who is addressing that? Mr. Corcoran? Or Mr. O'Neil?
That would be, that would be Eddie. Eddie?
Okay, please go ahead.
Yes, this, this addendum, addendum number one, uh, reflects retroactive changes, uh, that have occurred over the course of the past year. Uh, with the pandemic, uh, we had difficulty getting together with the college. Uh, they have been expanding since they have moved into our Broad Street building, and they're looking to further expand in the upcoming year. So we wanted to get the, uh, retroactive changes that have occurred, again, within the last nine months to a year, taken care of with addendum number one. I believe there was a graph that was included, a spreadsheet, that is a very descriptive, um, line-by-line analysis of what changes have occurred. There was an acquisition of a room, uh, about a year ago that was abandoned, and they took that over as a computer lab. Uh, then there was another area, uh, again, the lessee, uh, had moved out, and they, uh, took those over for classroom space. So there were two acquisitions or addition, additional spaces added, uh, within the last year. And in addition to that, we negotiated, uh, a slightly higher fee per square foot so that it would be standardized for their, uh, additional space being added going forward.
Thank you. Questions on this, O'Neil?
Yeah, just, just so that you're aware, even though these changes are retroactive, uh, and as you can see from that spreadsheet, this is going to result in a back payment, uh, of about fifty-seven thousand dollars to the Broad Street Building revenue account.
That's a good number to add in. Very good. Thank you. Uh, the Hazelton Land Bank, uh, I don't know who's going to speak from Hazelton. America's sad. I thought I saw his.
It's the mayor and, uh, and the attorney for the city, Attorney Langston.
Very good. Uh, the mayor or the attorney, you have a podium? I don't see any kind of icon or whatever at this point, unless I'm, they're on the phone and I can't see it. But not hearing anything, we'll move on. If they come on, then we'll, uh, come back to that.
The attorney's, I, I believe, you know, I don't, I don't see his name. All right.
Okay. Yeah, I don't see it either. If we did, I would ask him to come on, but it appears that they're not here at the present time. Uh, the number six, discussion regarding ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-one fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. That's an ERA. Seven, same type of ordinance, amended the two thousand twenty-one fiscal year budget for Luzerne County, and that's general fund. And the number eight is discussion regarding ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-one fiscal year budget for Luzerne County, and that should be drug and alcohol and not children and youth. So if you would note that on your agenda, drug and alcohol would be the, uh, department that would be involved with that. These are submitted by the Budget and Finance Department. Mr. Swets, do you want to speak to that?
I'll, I'll speak to six. I think somebody from Human Services will speak to the others. If not, I'll give it my best shot.
That's fine.
Number six.
I see her icon, so maybe she'll.
I believe, I believe Ms. Hill's ready to address that one.
That's fine. Go ahead, Mr. Swets.
You do it. So I'll just speak to number six. Uh, number six is similar to some of the other grants we received. Uh, we, obviously, uh, last time there was some money for emergency rental. Uh, there's another round. It's a different funding source. Uh, this, this time it's through Human Services. Uh, so we basically set up everything the same way. Uh, we only kept it in a separate fund because of the, when we talked to Mr. Riley, we were adding departments, and at that point, nobody had any idea of how many grants, and we still don't, we're going to get. Uh, we didn't want to get to the point of when community development has their audit, that they have twenty departments because the grants are going through community development. So we just recommend putting that in a separate fund. Uh, that was why, uh, through consultation with Mr. Riley, he really didn't care. He just said that it needed to be separate. So that's basically what we have in front of you, uh, is for, very similar to the prior one, and just in a separate fund. So that's basically what we have in front of you is for, very similar to the prior one, and just in a separate fund.
Okay. Ms. Hill, do you want to speak to the other two?
Well, I can speak to number eight regarding the hall program. That is additional funding we are receiving from the state. It originates from the federal government, so there's no county match. And it is to assist us with an existing program to, to help others with housing assistance, rental assistance, those dealing with opioid use disorders. The grant has been also expanded this time to include those dealing with stimulant use disorders. And we partner with the Commission on Economic Opportunity to manage the program, and it has been very successful. We've helped the last, this past year, we helped approximately 350 individuals. And at the start of this year, we already have 13 new individuals enrolled. So it's been very successful.
Very good. Is someone going to speak to number seven? Mr. Swets?
I'm trying to get the agenda.
Okay.
Once, give me one second.
No problem.
It's lost on my phone.
I got this one, Mr. McGinnity, this is the PCCD. This is the PCCD, the Pennsylvania lifting on crime and delinquency review. This would be for, this, this will move to the, I believe, the district attorney's budget. This will, this will help to free the cost from the COVID relation for the grants. Michelle Sparrow's been working on this from my office. Seventy-three thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars that we did not expect we were going to get this year due to the COVID we have. Also, I want to give counsel an update. We've been told by the, the, the federal authorities numerous times that we're going to be entitled to, the Luzerne County will be entitled to $114 million in the American Rescue Plan. We have not received those funds and we have not received any guidelines regarding the use of those funds, of what they can be used for, what they can't be used for. We have no timeline on when we're going to get them, but all we know is we're going to get them. So when we get them and when we, when we get them and when we get the guidelines, we'll come up with some recommendations and we'll work with county council for wherever you want to put those funds. But we haven't gotten them yet, and when we get them, we'll let you know.
Thank you. Okay, questions on six, seven, or eight? Counsel?
Mr. McGinnity, if I could address number, the one with the PCCD grant to Mr. Pedry? It says, it says that we're going to get seventy-three thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars for law enforcement offices and agencies. Are, is the district attorney's office supposed to divvy that money out to the municipalities? Is that how that grant is supposed to work? Or how is that supposed, or is it for him to use for his, his own?
I'll find out for you, but I believe it just goes to the district attorney as a law enforcement. I don't know what the plans are for you, but let me touch base with him and Michelle Sparrow, so I can get back to you on that one. I'll make a note.
Yeah, just so we have some kind of guideline on what he can use that money for. Because as we see, we certainly don't want to see that be used for something that, you know, should be used for something better than salaries or increases in pays or something like that. So if we could get the guidelines on that, that'd be helpful.
A follow-up.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay, you have the information in front of you? Oh, sorry, go ahead, somebody had.
It, it's, it's Ramilda, Chairman McGinnity. I, I received a text from Attorney Langston. They were just finishing up with a, a council meeting, a city council meeting. And they would like to be put on the end of the agenda.
We can put them at the end, that's no problem. Tell them it'll probably be at least 15, 20 minutes, I would think, but I'll probably give them enough time to recoup and get ready to make their presentation.
Mr. McGinnity?
Yes.
I just got a note here for Mr. Griffith. It's for all law enforcement departments within the county. So I apologize, not just the DA. It goes to probation, DA, juvenile probation, and the sheriff. And it's all within the county and it's not for salaries. But I'll get all the information for you, let counsel know.
Is he, is he, is he the one who's going to be the administrator of those funds, Mr. Pedry? Or is that going to go to individuals?
Let me track it down for you, Mr. Griffith, I'm trying to shoot from the hip here. I'll get back to you on that.
Not a problem, thank you.
I think that split between corrections, some private, you know, municipalities or boroughs and the district attorney. So it's going to all run through Michelle Sparrow, but it's for more than one source. It's not all going to the district attorney and it'll run through Michelle Sparrow.
So we'll probably be making budget amendments to various departments, not necessarily to the district attorney's office on that, correct?
We may need to do that. We were just putting it in the budget right now until we get all the information. But we may, we need to do one and then amend it, or if we get more information before the vote, we'll amend it before the vote.
Well, it'll be on the voting session for the first reading because it's a budget minute, two weeks hence. And then there'll be a second and final reading two weeks after that. So you have a little bit of time to get that information. Very good. Turning over to the page, number nine, discussion regarding resolution regarding quotation marks, convenience fee. Mr. Swets, I think you were to get some information.
Yeah, I'll take this.
To people or whatever, go ahead.
Yeah, so obviously Mr. Griffith had this on the last meeting. We reached out to Go Evolution. I personally emailed them twice, I know Ms. Beers emailed them, and I believe Ms. Beers also called them. We, you know, they acknowledged that they had it and what our request was, but we weren't given a timetable. I actually followed up on Thursday asking for a timetable because again, even if it wasn't going to be for tonight, are we looking at a week from now, a month from now? Is it something that we should try to put together? Is it something where, you know, another department needs to get involved? And basically they just acknowledged that they got the request in the format that we asked for. So we will continue to follow up, but we did not just, you know, we've made active effort to get this information, not only for the current year, but for the prior years. I think Mr. Pedry and I both said last time that if council was going to pass this, we'd like to just come to you once with a pot of money of, and for an estimate. So we asked for 2019, 2020, and 2021 to date. I didn't need it by taxpayer, I just basically wanted something that said, you know, 173 people at E-check at this amount and 173 people at credit card at this amount. And that wasn't provided yet, but we have had numerous correspondence, but we don't have a date at this point.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Swets?
Mr. McGinnity, if I could just jump off of it, I, I appreciate the input on this and I'm not, I'm not concerned about this fee, I think that's something that we could probably work on for at a later time to get that, that convenience fee to happen probably by the next years. By the time we get done doing the research and all the things we need to do, it might not happen until next year, apparently. But I wanted to, I, I forgot to ask you, Mr. Swets, and forgive me for my not asking. The, I noticed in the paper on this election poll worker thing. Can you just take a look and see if we, how we budgeted the money for election poll workers? I know last year we had to, there was a change made based on the COVID and they had to pay the poll workers more money, but that was supposed to be up for review. So if you or maybe Ms. Croco could pass that along to the Board of Elections for tomorrow, because I know they're having their meeting tomorrow, because we really need to have a handle on how much money we need to spend for poll workers. And if we have enough money budgeted, based on the fact that I saw in the paper, they're going to be paying judges like $250 for the day. And that's considerably higher than, than was approved by the last board. So if you could do some research on that and make sure that the Board of Elections is aware for tomorrow's meeting so they can approve that or not, so we know how our budget's going to look when they're all done, that would be helpful. And I apologize for us stepping out of the the meeting here real quick, but I forgot about that earlier on. So I appreciate your patience on that. Thanks, Mr. McGinnity.
I'll raise that, I'll raise that issue tomorrow, Councilman Griffith.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Committee reports, council committee reports, Act 13, Mr. Voe?
Nothing new.
Nothing new at this time. Mr. Perry? ABCs? Mr. Perry, are you muted? Yes, you are, Mr. Perry, you're muted.
Sorry, Chairman McGinnity. Last met April 6th, I don't have anything else scheduled down the line.
Okay, thank you. Budget, finance, and audit, that's myself with Ms. How, Mr. Griffith and Ms. Radell. We did yet a report from Baker Tilly's, sort of an, sort of an update. I would like to schedule a meeting very shortly, maybe as early as next week. I will be sending an email out to our committee members to see what day or times are convenient for everyone. But it's necessary that we get together within, because June 30th will be, the deadline will be coming at us pretty quickly. So I will be getting that information out and requesting that we get a meeting together. Mr. Haas?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
On the legislative, nothing. Real estate, Mr. McDermott?
Yes, Manager Pedry is having a meeting with several, several department heads to go over all lists of properties that the county has. I will then gather that information and discuss with my committee. The procedure for purchase of county-owned property will hopefully be finalized next week and ready for council to vote on next month. And I have no meetings scheduled at this point.
Will the procedure come back to the work session first, Ms. McDermott?
If you think that's the way we should do it, then yes.
Well, talk to your committee and see what they recommend and just let me know what your, what your thoughts are, please. I know it was on before, but you know, if you make some revisions, you may want that to be reviewed again, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, excuse me. Go ahead.
It's Chris, Leanne, a question for you, please.
Sure, yes.
Did you contact with the Lackawanna? Colts? I think there was something that, that, that happened that
The down later in the next set of committees, that's there, Mr.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
I missed that.
Thank you for, that's something we need to talk about. Strategic initiatives, Ms. How?
Nothing for strategic initiatives, but code review, we will be meeting on Tuesday at 4:30. And hopefully we'll finalize the section on divisions that was, that's, and then bring that to council.
Thank you. Going down to the council-related committees, Mr. Haas, Supply to Properties, please?
Yep, same, Mr. Chairman, nothing to report.
Okay. Mr. Voe?
Yes, County Cares meets tomorrow at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Mr. Haas, Riverfront Parks Committee, have you heard anything from those?
Haven't heard anything yet.
No.
I haven't seen or heard anything from either one, from any of those people. If I do happen, I will make sure that they get forward to you so you can deal with the, you know, that particular group. Plains Township Tiff Committee, I believe it's probably defunct. But I will check on that and if it's defunct at this point in time, we'll, we'll remove that. Mr. McDermott, LCTA and the Colts situation?
Right, so the purpose of the committee was to be able to discuss and gather information to bring back to council and then decide if it was, you know, going to be beneficial to do the merger. But to my disappointment and my committee's disappointment, we were not able to gather that information because Lackawanna County is not interested in doing a merger at this time. And there were a lot of people that worked really hard on that for many years. And I feel bad for them because we didn't even get to, you know, listen to their plan. So they've down the road.
Thank you. Moving down to number 12?
Mr. McGinnity, the only, I just want to give a brief, quick report on the county action plan or action plan committee that I was, I'm on. We just did a quick meeting last week. Yeah, we did a three and a half hour meeting with the primary stakeholders last week. We're going to do another meeting tomorrow to get all the stakeholders all, I think there's going to be like 30 or 40 people on the meeting to, to get a kickoff on the county-wide action or county-wide action plan that was put in place for the cleanup of the Chesapeake Bay. So just to keep council aware of progress as we're moving on, we did have our initial meeting. They do have a consultant in place and we're moving along, so I'll keep council approved or apprised.
Am I correct in saying, Mr. Griffith, that's four counties that are involved in that particular plan?
That is correct, yes, absolutely.
And if you give us the proper name of that committee, we'll make sure we have our agendas.
Sure, it's called the County Action Plan Committee.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving down to number 12, discussion regarding resolution requiring the use of electronic and telecommunications for all meetings of Luzerne County Council and authority boards and commissions of Luzerne County. Mr. Griffith, I think you submitted this information?
Yeah, and it, it's, it's a real brief thumbnail sketch of what that resolution states. Quite honestly, I think if we can gleam anything good from COVID, and I don't think there's a whole lot of things anybody could say good about what happened to us in the last year over this whole pandemic issue. But one of the things that we did get, and not only Luzerne County, but most governments in general, was the ability for people to attend meetings virtually, which is a really good thing. I mean, we've learned, I know at first we got, had a rocky start, but we've learned quite a bit on how we can do our meetings virtually. And so I would hate to lose that knowledge that we've gained from the pandemic and the ability to hold meetings virtually. Not to circumvent the ability to hold a meeting in public when the, when the appropriate time is available and the council decides that we should meet in public, we certainly could do that. But I think what we need to do is we need to maintain the ability to do the virtual meetings for folks who come from Hazelton and Berwick and Salem Township and, and anybody who sits on this council knows how massive this county is. There's union township people that are way out in the, way out there. It is a long drive for them to attend a council meeting. How wonderful would it be for them to be able to just log in, provide public comment and watch the meetings virtually? So this resolution basically addresses that for all boards, authorities, and commissions as well as council to continue with the virtual platform along with holding their meetings in public. So we don't, we don't just meet in public, we meet virtually as well. This doesn't affect, I don't believe it should affect our bylaws at all, where council members would attend virtually. They would still probably have to follow the bylaws, but this is mostly for the public. So people can attend these meetings virtually. And, and you know, quite honestly, we might be able to go back and meet in public quicker because most people won't attend the meeting in public, they'll attend it virtually. And so we will eliminate a lot of the pandemic fears and issues that people may have. So I think it's a good resolution to keep transparency out there for county residents and it makes it easier for everybody. So I would appreciate input on that and an affirmative vote on it as well.
Well, we'll get to that vote when, when it appears on the voting side, that's no problem. One, one or two comments that I have, and I certainly agree with the virtual meetings from Luzerne County Council. I think we've gotten over our rough spots and we're doing a pretty good job. And I know a lot of people have commented to me directly that, you know, it's something they enjoy and something they feel part of. Authorities, I don't know if we can mandate that with authorities because of the fact authorities are sort of a different animal. Boards and commissions, I don't know what their capabilities are, we would have to know that. But I think for the council, I don't think there's any issue personally. And I think, you know, whatever we have to do to set that up, we can do that. Other members of the council? Okay, thank you. Moving down to what I call number 13, although it's because of the change in the one item. The district attorney's salary adjustments or I think that's probably a good term. Mr. Griffith, you have a question?
And I'll be, yeah, I'll be kind of brief on this too. I think one of the issues that was raised with this ability for the district attorney to simply increase the salary item for a assisted district attorney is something that's, is something that we've, we've addressed. I think we need to make a motion at maybe our next council meeting to make sure that it's a part of the record, that, that can't happen for HRs and for the managers' ability to have direction from council to say that we're not approving increasing salaries in the district attorney's office for, for the the transfer of that type of fund. I think our charter is very clear as Ms. Croco has stated in her opinion. I think that it's very clear for the controller as well as the district attorney that, you know, they're, they're able to transfer monies. My, my concern with salaries, and it doesn't necessarily mean just for DA or controller, is the salary item that's changed affects multiple line items of which we're responsible for as council. And my fear is that if we allow that to happen, I mean, we could really start a real issue here. But my, my basic concern with salaries is I've always stated that I think salaries are encumbered items. I don't think salaries are unencumbered funds. Based on the fact that we have X amount of employees and we have to pay them and we budget money for that, that makes them encumbered. But most importantly, I think that we need to make sure the council has a firm stance on the fact that the, the, the district attorney cannot give pay raises out. First of all, I don't believe the district attorney that sits there is an elected official, he's an appointed official. He's an appointed official. So that fixes that issue altogether. But most importantly, I think the issue is that, you know, if we allow the district attorney to arbitrarily take money, and I think any savings that this county realizes from somebody moving from one position to another is savings for the taxpayers. It's not savings for a division head or a department head to say, well, jeez, I got extra money. I could just give raises. We specifically, as council, voted not to give merit raises. And I think for someone to go outside of that, that, that recommendation by council is really not, is really not in the spirit of what this council thought was best interest to the taxpayer. So I just think we should take a motion to send a clear message to the manager that we don't approve of it. And I don't think anything has happened. Maybe a motion's not even appropriate at this time, but those are my thoughts. I just wanted to first discuss with the other council.
Okay. And you referred to Ms. Croco's memo with her statement, the fact, and you know, that's, I think everybody's received that. And I think it was pretty clear, the memo that she sent out. Other members of council would like to speak to the DA salary adjustments?
Yes, Sheila.
Go ahead.
And I was very appreciative of Ramilda's discussion of the law and the clarity with which she stated it. My concern, it was brought to my attention, this concern on Saturday, and it was regarding Scott Kajerski's letter, which I thought was very important. I thought it was a well, well-written letter with serious points on it in terms of, you kind of brought it up when we said no manager increases, but this is regarding the ADAs and how upset they were over the statements that were made about the three deputies as opposed to the, the low men on the totem pole. So I think they're my concerns, really, that we can't do that. And I, I'm glad, Walter, you brought this up tonight. And I hope everybody read Scott's letter. And I think it's very important that we make it clear that, you know, they had to come to us for the salary changes. And hey, if he was looking at salary changes for everybody, we'll, we'll see next year. But right now, you know, the ADAs can't be forgotten about.
Other members of council?
Yes, Mr. McGinley, it's Linda Houck.
Go ahead.
You know, and I, I sent an email to council about this and Mr. Sangodolchi. You know, his, his rationale for giving raises is what it is, you know, management gives merit raises. However, my concern is that the appropriate time to do it is during budget season. And I believe that, and you know, we had this discussion last year in budget time, that we might, might not have a line item that says merit increases, that's just a pot of money to draw from, that those decisions should be made before the budget is created because the position budget ties into that. And so that's why when we go through that budget line by line, we say, you know, what positions are you funding with these line items? And the line items need to tie into the position budget. So, you know, management in any division can offer merit raises whenever, when they'd like to, or to whoever they'd like to, not when they'd like to. Because again, I think when the time to do that is during budget season. And that's the whole purpose of the position budget.
Yeah, I think your email was well-stated, the one you sent out to council and Mr. Sangodolchi. So I think he understands that part of it. Anyone else? Nothing being heard. Well, Ms. Croco-Mo, if you have contact with the Hazleton group, if they would like to like do your presentation at this time?
I believe that they're on. They said that they were on, but I will text them.
We are here.
Okay, would you introduce yourselves, please?
Mayor Jeff Kasat.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. It's Sean Loggs, in the solicitor for Hazelton City.
Thank you. You have the podium.
Thank you very much. Good evening. And I'm sorry about the, the mix-up. We have our, our city council meeting was tonight at 6:00, and we thought we'd be done at 7:00 for your work session.
Oh, that's fine. You're, you're, you're fine. No problem.
Thank you. We appreciate it. And as members of council, the reason we're here tonight to, to talk to you is about the Hazelton City for a while now, since Mayor Kasat's been in office, we've been seriously considering a land bank. And, and last year, we actually passed an ordinance creating the Hazelton City Land Bank. We think based on lots of consultants that we've talked to in terms of creating a land bank and establishing one in the city, we think it's going to be extremely beneficial to us for doing things like fighting blight and, and creating more friendly development areas, whether it be residential. And, you know, we have quite a bit of industrial development going on in the city right now, and it's a very exciting time. And I think it's a, a perfect time for us to have this land bank up and running. And, and basically what we're looking for here tonight is county council support to try to help us get it off the ground. Basically, what we're asking for is county council to abate the current and delinquent property taxes on any property that's acquired and maintained by the land bank. And in addition to that, we're also asking for the county's assistance in funding the program by, just until, of course, we're self-sufficient. We're, we're requesting that for five years, the, the county assign the taxes that are paid on any property that's transferred through the land bank process and put back on the tax rolls. So it's kind of a two-part request tonight, the first being an abatement on current and delinquent property taxes for properties that are required and maintained by the land bank. And that second point for, so if a property sold by the land bank for five years, the county then assigned back the, the taxes for that property so that we can start a fund to start getting the, the land bank here in Hazelton more self-sufficient.
Any other comments from Hazelton? Mayor or attorney?
No, I just want to thanks for the opportunity. You know, we're just trying to get as many properties back on the, back on the tax rolls as possible. You know, going through the city, there's a lot of properties that haven't been paying for many, many years. And I think if we get the land bank in place, get it moving in the right direction, you know, the long-term, we can get those properties back paying taxes to all three entities. So we would like some support if possible. Thank you.
My comment that I have, if I may, at this point, that's, you know, the second, the first part, I think you would just do the normal procedures, asking for abatement or whatever, just as we've done with other municipalities. The second part, when you're requesting that for five years after the property goes back on the tax rolls, that the Loseran County taxes that would be produced by that property coming back would be rebated, rebated back to the city, it sounds like. Am I correct in that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would you be making the same request for the school district?
Yes, we did. Yes, sir. We, we, I, I was at the school board meeting, I want to say last month, and I spoke during their work session.
That, okay, that closes it up for me. But other members of council would like to questions, comments regards to the Hazelton proposal?
Mr. McGinley, if I could?
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Mr. Kasat, do you have a redevelopment authority in Hazelton? Shouldn't the Blighted Property Committee work through the redevelopment authority, much like the county one?
We do have a redevelopment authority. We, we, there's some extra tools that a land bank would have that the redevelopment authority can't utilize. And that's where we think the land bank, you know, could be really effective. You know, there's some, there's some properties that when they go to tax sale, we could utilize a trump bid, and then we'd actually be able to take possession of them. What's, what's happening is there's a lot of properties that are being sold. The new buyer is looking, coming in, seeing what they are, and then they sit there for two more years, and then it goes back on the tax sale. Where if we had, if we were able to come in here and utilize that trump bid, we could really just, you know, take care of the problem immediately. So that's where there's a difference between where the land, the way the land bank could work and the redevelopment authority would be able to work.
That's kind of the same problem we have with repository properties. They buy them and they don't do nothing with them. And then they go back on the tax rolls. So, so we're, we're dealing with that as well. But I just thought that the, the Blighted Property Committee, I know in the county, that has to go through the redevelopment authority by, if I remember the procedure back when we formed the Blighted Property Committee, that was all financed, well, not financed, but certainly the funding and everything was all channeled through the redevelopment authority. So do you have an active redevelopment authority? Do they have any meetings or?
Our redevelopment authority is not really active. They only come in when we, we, there's no money in it. Though it really has not been utilized in, in that way. It's basically utilized to, they funded a couple of loans for us, but they have not been able to act in that manner.
But, but if I could just jump in, isn't the, can't the redevelopment authority get funding? If they were active, they could get grant money and things like that to help with the blight in Hazelton City if they were active? Could they not be, could you, as, as a city, could you not make your redevelopment authority more active to get the grant money that you need to help rather than do a land bank process?
Well, I just believe that some of the tools that the land bank has are much easier process to go through. You know, the quiet title action is another one of the tools that is really beneficial, where we can move the process a lot, a lot faster than going through the, the normal process of the redevelopment authority.
And when we were talking to our consultants, the people that came in, I mean, there's, there's quite a few cities that work with their land banks through their redevelopment authorities. But in our situation, just the way it was, it seemed like it was a better idea to go with a, an independent land bank rather than doing it through the redevelopment authority.
I think Pittston City uses the redevelopment authority as well. I'm pretty sure for their land bank. But, so who's on the, who's on your board for your land bank?
We, we did not, we did not pick the land bank members yet until we get it into place. But it will be two, two members of my choosing, two members of council choosing, the redevelopment, the head of the redevelopment authority, the head of the, a member from the housing authority, a member from the community development, I believe it's a seven-member, seven-member board, is the way our ordinance was set up.
Okay. Well, there was, I said, there was nothing in our packet as what, so I mean, just if you, you could recap on what you want the county to help you with. Is, is this going to be on a voting session agenda, Mr. McGinley?
What I, what I expect, Mr. Griffith, is I'm going to ask the gentleman from Hazel to submit information to the Office of Law. The Office of Law can look at it and formulate it in the proper setup, and we'll put it back on the work session two weeks hence with the information they provide so that we have a better understanding of what the request is and, you know, where we stand, and then we can have more discussion on that.
Very good. Thank you so much for clapping.
Mr. McGinley, Sheila.
Go ahead.
Are there other municipalities? I mean, I haven't heard of the land bank for any other municipalities. Are there other municipalities in Loseran County that have a land bank?
Yeah, Pittston City, I know they've added some other municipalities, has a, has a land bank that's been very successful, I think, for their goals and endeavors. So in fact, Hazelton gentleman, I think when somebody approached me about this maybe several months ago, land bank and stuff, I said, they probably should contact Pittston City and so, and talk to them how they handled everything, set things up and whatever. Because I think they've had a very good model for several years now.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Would you please submit that information to our Office of Law? And then any of the other information that you want to provide, the resolution would be helpful, I believe, that you passed. And anything else you want to add to that so that we have the information so we can bring it back for a work session two weeks hence, okay?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. We're now at public comment, please?
Mr. McGinley, could I just jump in quick on my last comment that I wanted to make on that ACE Code, please?
I thought I was, I was going to give you less, but if you want to do it now, I have no problem.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me just do it. It's, it's going to be.
That's fine.
The concern that I have with the ACE Code, and I know that's probably something that we could discuss under the code review committee, but one of the things that's really glaring was there was a couple of complaints filed against myself and some other members of council recently on this ACE Code, ACE Committee. Of course, they were dismissed. But I recently sent an email to Mr. Sharkey, asking him for a copy of the complaint. And he said that I can't get a copy of the complaint because the ACE Code doesn't allow it. I think that's our due process. We need to look at this ACE Code because any member of this council who has a violation filed against them should have the opportunity to at least see what the violation is so they can either prepare for a defense or at least decide if it's a frivolous complaint or not, and then act accordingly. But according to the ACE Code, there are absolutely no provisions at all anywhere in the code that provides the person who the complaint is about to receive a copy of the actual complaint. From beginning to end of our ACE Code, it basically says the attorney looks at the code, or looks at the complaint. If the complaint is not valid, it gets dismissed. If the complaint is valid, it goes before the ACE Commission. The ACE Commission adjudicates it and brings people into debt to, to adjudicate the whole process. But the person who the complaint is about never gets, never gets a copy of the complaint. It's strictly stated in the code, to maintain confidentiality, it is not to be given to anyone. And we need to really look at that because as an individual person, mostly a council person, any member of council, and I think we've had this discussion before, can have an ACE Commission complaint filed against them, leak the information to the press, do damage to the person who's an elected official, and the elected official never gets a copy of the complaint to say, whether the complaint's a valid complaint or not. Basically, we're, we're at the mercy of the individual filing the complaint. I think that's something that needs to be looked at in the code, and maybe we could look at that under the code review committee. But I just wanted members of council to take a look at our ACE Code. And I know Linda's very well-versed on this because, I mean, you guys, you, Mr. McGinley and Linda were here at the outset, and Harry, it's really, it really needs to be looked at. I, I think the ability for somebody to file a complaint against anyone, whether it be anyone in the, any covered person, should get a copy of that complaint, regardless of whether it's a valid complaint or not. The moment it's filed, they should get that copy. So I just wanted to put that out for members of council so they could take a look at it and maybe give feedback to the code review committee. Thank you, Mr. McGinley.
No problem. Now we're open for members of the public.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raabo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raabo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to the discussion on the land bank, I'd like to answer Councilwoman Seidman's question with regards to what a land bank does. A land bank is the last step in the blight process, not the first step. The first step is going through the Blighted Property Review Committee to determine, to determine and then certify a property that has been brought in front of it as a quote-unquote blighted property. Once that is done, it goes to the redevelopment authority for disposition. Then, once that, once the authority determines how that property, that certified, legally certified blighted property goes to the authority, then they dispose of it as they see fit or as the county would wish the, the property or the municipality would wish the property to be disposed. Then it goes to the land bank, and the land bank would then, if, if the redevelopment authority doesn't have any persons or developers to deal with it, it would go to the land bank. The land bank would then have an auction to, you know, it would be similar to what would go through the tax sale auction process. And that's what would happen. Now, as the mayor referred to quiet title elimination, that is if there is a deed that is ambiguous or not clear as to who the owner is. And then once that, that title is actually, they would actually have the ability to get a new title, and then that would then be disposed of. So just a simple little process there, you know, inside of three minutes, trying to, as Mr. Haas and Mr. Chairman, you say, keep it, keep it brief and pithy and to the point with regards to the process. And that's what I did in, in about three minutes. So there's the, that's the blight process in a nutshell. So the Hazelton Land Bank needs to have their paperwork in a row like Northeast Regional did when it comes in front of you guys with their, who they're appointing, their bylaws, and the financial plan, which the consultants did tell Hazelton City that they needed to come up with before forming the land bank. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Other members of the public? Other members of the public? Other members of the public?
Mr. Mantha.
Go ahead, Mr. Mantha.
Okay. And to, to address some of this, the, uh, the things about the, um, um, situation for the tax, a 65% tax break for these people that are looking to build in the area. So, so what they're saying is they don't want to pay their taxes until they have someone to buy the property and put something there. So I think that would be fair to have the rest of the people in the county say, well, I don't want to pay my taxes until my house is, uh, worth a hundred and $100,000. So, so this, this sort of like defeats the purpose of paying taxes. I mean, the, the area is, is full of, of different things that people could take advantage of. They, they, there's a lot of things in the area besides the almighty dollar. And is there any, uh, instance where the Luzerne County and Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority are going to be partnered in some kind of a deal? Or is that a false statement? If you could answer that for me, Mr. McGinley?
Uh, there is no deal that I'm aware of at this point.
There is no deal from Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority?
No deal that I'm aware of to this point.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the public? I have a motion to adjourn.
Uh, Mr. McGinley, before we adjourn, can, can, as long as Mr. Mantha asks a question, could Mr. Pedry answer the letter? Give us a statement as to regard that letter from the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority is to, have we not paid our sewer authority for the last three years, uh, bill? Because I know there was allegations that we were doing a bartering system with the Thonitaries Office and, and on and on and on. So if we could get Mr. Pedry to answer whether we are in the rears with the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority at this point by three years or not, and what that letter actually meant, uh, would be very helpful.
So, uh, just a little bit of a reminder, uh, during our budget process last year, we had a $10,000 assignment that was placed in the budget by the administration in order to pay our, um, Wyoming Valley Sanitation Authority stormwater fee. Uh, we chose at that point, the council chose at that point to take that money out of the budget. So that was something we did as a council. But Mr. Pedry, you want to respond?
Yeah, correct. Uh, county council has never allocated funding to pay these bills, so we have never paid them. Uh, there was some early negotiations, uh, regarding, uh, what we can do together and try to like work on some sort of system. Uh, I have turned all those negotiations over to the Solicitor's Office. Um, and I think the letter, uh, says that they would like to have a committee where they would sit down with county council, uh, a committee from county council and, and, and address some issues that we have going forward. County administration will be happy to work out with whatever you want to work with.
Sure.
There hasn't been any, there, there hasn't been any agreement, there hasn't been, you know, I believe the term by one of our frequent public commentators is backroom cigar smoke deals. That is, uh, that, 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 that hasn't, that hasn't happened.
So, so if we actually owe the money, should we not be good stewards and pay our stormwater fee like our residents do? What is our, what should we do as council?
Mr. Griffith, I agree with you. I think we should be paying our fee if that's what, if council approves that, that's fine. Uh, you also know, Mr. Griffith, that because it was stated a couple of times that a lot of the, uh, fee was as a result of the, um, Port Hurst Grand Airport. And I know that in the airport budget, there is monies to pay that portion. So we certainly can, uh, but I would require council's action now to put that into the budget and, and pay that, that fee. You can put that on the agenda for next voting meeting if you wish.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
It's Linda Howk. I would just like to, um, make a comment. Mr. Pedry said council never allocated that money, so we never paid it. Um, that is a little bit of, and by a little bit, I mean a lot of shifting the blame because the fact is that the manager never budgeted the money. And when people asked about it during the budget process in the last two years, we were told that they were working on it. It is not council's fault that it is not in the budget. It was, uh, omitted from the budget by the manager. And council, when it, when we asked about it, council was told that the, uh, the manager was working on it.
Okay.
I, I, Mr. McGinley, I did allocate, and Mr. Ms. Howk, if you recall, I did allocate $10,000 in the 2021 budget in my proposed budget.
Which was a pittance of what was owed, wasn't it?
Yeah, but I believe that, I believed at the time I put that in there that we can come in at that amount.
No way. No way.
Excuse me, Mr. Mantha.
Well, all, all I'm saying is I don't, I, I personally don't feel we should wait until, and I appreciate the fact that it may be on the voting agenda for the airport, uh, issue, but.
No, it's in the, it's in the airport budget.
Okay. Well, okay, so, but my concern is if we owe it, we shouldn't wait until October, uh, before budget season to allocate the funds. If we, if we owe it and we aren't going to set an ad hoc committee up to decide how we're going to negotiate with the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority on what we can provide to make that go away. I think it's our responsibility, our responsibility as council to either transfer money from our reserve fund and pay that bill that's owed. Uh, we don't, we, we, we certainly need to do that if we owe it and it's a legitimate bill. Uh, for us to tell the taxpayers that they have to pay their stormwater fee and then for us to say, well, you know, if we get around to it, we'll pay it. If we don't, I don't think sends a, a clear example, and I know that's not what we're doing. But I think if we owe the money, we need to get a report from Budget and Finance, what we owe, what's the legitimate amount that we have to pay and either transfer the money and make a motion to pay that and move on and then work on it for 2022's budget as to whether we're going to continue to make those payments or negotiate it in services or whichever way we want to do that. But currently, according to that letter, we're in the arrears by three years.
Well, we'll, we'll, uh, make sure we have the information and then there'll be something on the agenda next two weeks. Okay?
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Now, uh, somebody for motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Chris, uh, listen, I just want to say you did a great job tonight and welcome back.
Welcome back. We need.
I appreciate that very much, but, uh, I have to say that we have a lot of good people who have done a lot of good work. And I appreciate their efforts also. So, Mr. Perry, you make the motion to adjourn?
Yeah, it's glad to be, to hear you back, Mr. McGinley.
Thanks, Mrs. Ne. Will you second the motion?
One other item.
Oh, go ahead.
It's, uh, Ramilda's birthday today, so happy birthday, Ram.
Okay. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Ramilda.
Happy birthday. Thank you. Thank you very much.
For, for adjournment?
I'll second it.
Happy birthday, Ramilda.
Thank you. Wonderful to share it with you.
Aye.
Aye.
Blow the candles out now.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Enjoy the weather. Eighty degrees, so enjoy the weather.
Enjoy.
Thank you. Ramilda, are you baking a cake?
No, I'll end up in the emergency room if I bake the cake. That's my sister's job.
Oh, my goodness. See you, kitty cat.
Yeah.